Let me just signify the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to ask you to stand for a moment of silent reflection, and I would like to have everybody think about people that worked for the Salvation Army, especially over the holidays, because I know they served over somewhere between three and four hundred families that needed that food for the holiday season. So if nothing else, I'd just like to think a little bit about blessing the people that worked in our local Salvation Army. Thank you. Go call. Here. I want to announce that we had an executive session right prior to this meeting on police personnel. Is there any audience comments on any of the agenda items? Is there anybody here in SRI? Slade, do you have anything?
Just about New Year's Eve coming up Thursday night.
All right, we're going to announce that down at the end for you also. Thank you very much. Marcus, you update Jim?
It's basically done, had to walk through the rec-- one, two minor things, and I haven't found anything that would be finished yet, but it will work it off.
No redevelopment authority for this meeting. Unfinished business, John. Twenty sixteen budget.
Okay, well you have before you gentlemen, the twenty sixteen budget. The budget is exactly the same as the budget we completed at the end of the work several weeks ago. It is a balanced budget. The total revenue and expenses for the year budgeted at four million, three hundred ninety-one thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars of projected revenue, and the expenses match, so we are in balance. I make a motion that we pass a two thousand and sixteen budget.
You second? Dale second it?
Shitman?
Yes.
Reichter?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Icster?
First name?
Yes.
Tax levy, John?
The tax levy, there's no change in taxes for the year. The general fund is at twenty-five bills, recreation at point-two bills, bribery tax at point-zero-two-five, debt reduction of two bills, all of those the same as last year. I'm pleased to say there's no tax increase for Sunbury this year. Make a motion that we pass the--
Reichter?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Icster?
First name?
Yes.
Shitman?
Yes.
Uh, new business, Jim?
Yes. Agreement between the city of Sunbury and Othelwyn County on the parcel of land. The only thing this is, the name is the fact that we had applied for rack pea money years ago in Harrisburg, and if rack pea money would show up, we'll take and be in agreement with the county. There's no guarantees. This agreement's only to two thousand and two thousand seventeen, and it all depends on funding through Harrisburg. It may never come about, but if it does, we will be working with the county on that parcel affair. And--
Parcel where?
The sell-off section.
Sell-off section.
The front part of it, put it on the street.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Again, there's no rack pea money available right now.
Why do we have to-- if we don't have the money, why do we have to--
We just said that, well, it's a agreement between the county and the city of Sunbury. Now, they're putting application, and what we have done is, it's like a voucher, we have taken the voucher here into the county so they can apply for it. That voucher was for that parcel up there.
This memorandum of understanding, that's us.
For the future. But it may not ever come about, because when the budget is in Harrisburg, you just don't know. Besides that, the four million had to be matched up, and we don't have the four million to match up, do we, and they would, so if there's an opportunity, they can use the county's money, because they're invested in that personal site up there, so that allows them to match that up.
As long as if you don't apply, you don't have a chance of getting it, so if you do apply with the understanding, hopefully you will get it, if you don't, not the lawsuit. All right?
Make a motion to--
You second?
Second.
Henry?
How much did he need the county to land for?
Next turn?
Yes.
First name?
Yes.
Shitman?
Yes.
Reichter?
Yes.
John, fee schedule?
Okay, following fee schedules will be effective January the first two thousand and sixteen, these are increases. Number one, rental permits for all permanent residential housing, including hotels and boarding houses and higher prices, will be fifty dollars per unit per year. Sony hearing board fees will be five hundred dollars. Not allowed to make a profit on that, but we're not covering our current expenses, so we need to increase that a little bit. Daily parking, daily parking permits will be two dollars, and obviously you can buy a monthly one for fifteen dollars, which would be a savings. And utility cuts, street excavation fee is now a hundred dollars for the fee, and twenty-five dollars per square foot of cut. Make a motion that we adopt the updated fee schedule.
You second?
Second.
Icster?
Yes.
First name?
Yes.
Shitman?
Yes.
Reichter?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Rick, subdivision Mertz Real Estate.
Mike, you got that, Rick?
Yes, sir. General, I'm asking you this evening for final approval of a subdivision for the Mertz Real Estate located at three hundred, three ten Packer Street. It's basically the area where the bowling alley and the car wash is. They're looking to subdivide that site, it's also land. The county planning approved the project September twenty-eighth. Humberry Municipal Authority Water, November fifteenth. Southern Municipal Authority Sewer approved it November nineteenth. The gentleman approved the stormwater waiver on November twenty-third due to no proposed construction or development. City engineer approved on December fourteenth, and the planning commission approved it on December seventeenth.
I'll make the motion that we accept the subdivision.
First name?
Yes.
Shitman?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Icster?
Yes.
Approval of pay invoices, John?
Okay, we have invoices in the amount of hundred and three thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty-nine cents to pay for the up-to-date. There are, we have not paid the health insurance. That should be paid, if not by the end of the week, probably the beginning of January. It is the January premium, so we're not really behind on that. Other than that, we're just about finishing the year. With that kind of a deficit, that bill's going to be about seventy-two thousand dollars. So actually, from a pretty down position, we came back pretty good over the year, with the exception of that bill, which is actually a January bill. The rest of the bills are paid up. I make a motion that we pay our bills.
John, correction, that's going to be a hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars, because we've got one coming for Penn Valley, a five-year plan, twenty-one-hundred, that we add to that. We're late today, today.
One oh five, seven seventy-two, so that's our deficit at this point.
That is what the pay invoices is, is one oh five, seven seventy-two.
Oh, to pay in for that, I'm sorry. Okay. Direct the pay invoices to add that Penn Valley Airport.
Twenty-one-hundred.
Twenty-one-hundred, so it's one oh five, seven seventy-two. We have no liquid fuels this month, so make a motion that we pay our bills.
Shitman?
Yes.
Reichter?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Icster?
Yes.
First name?
Yes.
While we're finishing up that piece, I would just like to take this opportunity to tell all my colleagues here at this table that I've enjoyed working with you. It's been a real pleasure. We haven't always agreed. Sometimes disagreements have been fairly serious, but we're still friends, and that's important to me. It's been a pleasure working with you, and I thank you very much. Too bad Terry's not here, she's been a real help, and I want to make sure to mention Terry Spink. She's been an outstanding city clerk, and she's been a real help to me. I want to thank you, the citizens of Sunbury, for the privilege of serving you, and tell you how much I appreciate your support, and thank you very much.
The GPS dash camera policy, we're still working on, so we're just going to put that on. Audience comment? Any specific audience comment? Yes, sir?
Last meeting, I asked Mr. Reichter to give me a report on how many people got licenses down to the Sunoco.
Uh, I'm not sure. My clerk told me he was in an asker's day, or the other day. I asked her to get it to you.
You didn't get it from her?
Last few.
And I relayed it to my clerk.
Well, yeah, she gave me a list of a couple people that got licenses, and I would guess there has to be at least maybe ten to fifteen subcontractors down there working, or had to work there.
I don't know. I'll look into it. So I know some of them are--
Man, why wouldn't you know? You know everything that I'm doing, so--
I mean, that was your choice, Mr. Snyder. You're the one that told us you would never buy a license in this town.
I didn't say that. I said catch me if you can. Say catch me if you can.
That's right. And so that's why, that's why you're on our target.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. I'm already paid up for two thousand and sixteen, by the way.
Okay, that's great. That's fantastic. We wouldn't have, we wouldn't be discussing this today if you didn't--
We will be discussing this for a long time, because I'm going to keep pushing the subject, because you seem to have, however you want to benefit, you all.
I do. Your job is to represent the city of Sunbury.
And we said you all. So the question is, how many people got licenses down there, or how many people worked there that needed a license? Why can't I get this information? Well, listen, other than you don't know anything about contracting, because if you have a general contractor, they usually put the superintendent on the board, the work field, and a couple laborers. Everything else is subbed out. The mason will be subbed out, the excavation will be subbed out, concrete workers subbed out, structural steel's subbed out, roofers are subbed out. What part of this don't I understand?
And this very question was asked last council meeting.
And I got him, he got the answers that I had. I mean, my clerk put through what we had.
Well, that's not enough then, let's put it that way.
Okay, and then we'll research that, start tomorrow.
Right, then you give me a report till the next minute.
Yeah, I don't have my clerk mail you one.
No, I'll stop, I'll stop in and see your file. But if you're going to come after me, you got to go after everybody, or I'm going to start saying, I'm going to start saying you're picking on me.
We don't have anybody, anybody that we find out that is not in compliance with the city's ordinances that we do not go after. Mrs. Russell, were you notified when you were doing work without a permit?
I wasn't notified, I guess the people who were doing the work--
Absolutely.
But it is also my understanding that any contractors who do work in the state of Pennsylvania can get a license by the state, and they don't have to go getting permits every time they do a job in little cities like this. They have an HIC number which registers them with the state, so I'm kind of on the side of Mr. Snyder.
Strictly residential, in the commercial, you need a license to work in the city of Sunbury, as well as a state license.
But the question is, Mr. Snyder, does he has all the lists, so we need to update the list, is what you're saying, correct?
I'm saying you're missing half of the list.
That's what, okay, that's what I'm saying, so he needs to update the list because you don't think you have it all.
I know he doesn't. I don't go around looking for these people, I just drive around, say, oh, look at that car, and I write the name down. Oh, look at that, will I write the name down there?
I just wanted to make sure it's right in a minute, so he knows.
He knows, so, yeah.
There are questions beyond. Uh, announcements, let me get these two out of the way quickly. New Year's Eve celebration downtown, twelve thirty-one. Of course, that's New Year's Eve. Slade, real quick, starts at what time?
Kids' hour starts at six, goes on to Cameron Park from six to eight, we have Prince and Princesses, hot chocolate carriage rides, then go down Market Street, Fourth of Market, eight o'clock, we have colors best kept black, old school, and then final, the final appearance of Jesse, fireworks at midnight, the lighting of the light bulb, Cassie Paul singing All That's I, and then finish out with Jesse, the VIP tent, tickets are on sale at SRI. There you go.
You still have tickets left?
Yes.
And the weather's going to be what?
It's going to be great today, on Thursday, it's going to be around forty-six, and at midnight it's going to be around thirty-six.
Should be perfect. The other thing I want to announce is a frozen ice skating party, I'm not exactly sure what that is, but it was hugely successful, so they said January the second, they will have one at the rink from four to six, cost is ten dollars per person. Want to announce that. All right, at the last meeting, I announced that we would come up, try to come up with a statement with the status of the police department, where the police department stands at this time. You have seen, I'm sure you've heard the news, as far as the coverage, as Chief Harris has resigned, is now corporal for the Sunbury Police Department. We are not going to fill that position at this time. We will actively go out and pursue someone to be the chief from the outside, you'll hear about that in the near future. Currently, what's going to happen is, I'm actually retiring in a couple days, so I guess that everybody thinks I have more time, so we're going to spend more time down with the officers, and take this opportunity for maybe a little reorganization, you know, within the realms of the contract, and also an opportunity to address some of the needs and concerns of the officers, to bring back the counsel. This looks like a good time, the investigation is still ongoing, there are still issues that have not been solved, and this is all per our legal review. So officially, that's what's happening right now. And again, like I said, the investigation is still not, has nothing to do with the ex-chief, but has the officers, or an officer anyway that has the issue. Personnel issues, just one more thing, personnel issues, so you know, if there's anything that you guys want to ask, then I can. Mr. Hair, Officer Hair?
I'd just like to address the public and just say, thank everybody for the support. It's seventeen months to the day that I took this job, and I take my job very seriously. The name on that badge says chief, and that doesn't mean nothing to me. It's the badge itself that is important to me, and I appreciate everybody supporting me, my family's here, and the public, and there is a great group of officers down there. This investigation has took a toll on me and my family. Again, when I put my press release out, I have done nothing wrong. There is, everything I have done, I have justified. I just have too many doubters on counsel to do my job to the best of its ability, but I will still be a corporal in the Sunbury Police Department, and I will make sure that I do my job one-hundred percent, and also whoever does come in as chief, I will make sure that they get my utmost respect and dedication, because that's what police work is all about. It's all about the safety of the citizens of Sunbury, and again, I appreciate everybody's support. Thank you.
If you want to mention, can I, all of the police department, Sergeant Taylor has filed a third sentence agreement, so I haven't even opened it up yet, but I just want that for the minutes. But that was in there. Yes, ma'am?
How could you continually fall under the guise of personnel issues and not tell the public anything? We are taxpayers. We pay salaries. How can you fall under that continually?
I don't make the law.
That's a dodge.
I don't make the law.
That's a dodge.
But until somebody changes the law, like I said before, until somebody says, I can release the information, I have no problem releasing it.
Just like counsel interfering with the police department. How informed is the counsel to know the laws that they're interfering with what is to be done in the police department? I get it that you're over the police department, I get that, but--
Hold on, hold on, I'll do the investigation.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
How can you continue--
Please.
Call the truth. How can you continue to protect scumbags such as Scott Hawes, that you know is a corrupt officer, you know the things that he has done, but you sit up there and you lie to the city? You know the truth, you know the matter, you know what he did, so why don't you step up and get a set of balls and do something about it?
Why don't you just shut up and act like--
I should have.
That's right.
You know--
You're going to talk--
You are a disgrace. You are a disgrace to this entire city. You really are. And you sit there and you continue to preach and feed these people, it's bull crap.
Well, everybody's allowed their opinion, sir.
Everybody's allowed their opinion.
The old facts, not the--
When people come to you with facts--
That's what courts deal with.
And you do nothing about it. Pause, why don't you stand up here? Come on up here.
Why doesn't your wife stand up?
Why don't you stand up here? Come on, scumbag, stand up.
Why doesn't your wife stand up?
All right, sir, I give your opinion.
Thank you. I know, why don't you stand up?
I think that counsel and you, as Mayor David, really owe the taxpayers more than what you're giving us. We are the taxpayers, and none of you seem to understand that. You act as though we work for you instead of the other way around.
And you're the head of--
And that lawyer releases what we can say, we'll say what we want to say. Right now, we release what we're allowed to say. But the last thing I'm going to do is let the city get themselves in a lawsuit down the road, that we have to defend for a lot of money--
But then you also--
Because we made something we shouldn't say.
You've also said in press that as soon as you have a court order handed to you, you will walk across the park on the daily island.
That's what I'm just telling you right now. As soon as somebody said what we can talk, what we can, what we can express, that's not personnel information, that we can't be held liable, you're right, I mean, that has nothing to do with the counsel, I will personally release all that we can release, but right now I got lawyers saying this is personnel information, it's not, and I'm right to know it has nothing to do with it, and until that time comes, you're going to get everything we can give you, which is what you're getting right now.
Then why do you continually say in the press, we're going to make a statement, we're going to tell you the way it is, and still you hide under personnel issues? It's ridiculous.
Whatever I can tell you, I tell you. That's what I said, I just told you now.
You told us the same thing for how many months?
Yes.
How many months? Personnel issues. From the get, you said, from the get, you said personnel issues.
That's what it is. John?
Let me tell you that we are, we have worked diligently on this. I would like to tell you that the report that we have back from the attorneys in Philadelphia do say some things that aren't strictly personnel related. They do say, for instance, that the investigation, the internal investigation that was done by the police department was severely lacking. They do say that the police department handled the investigation ineptly. They do say that we need to do a lot of changes in the procedures and policies within the police department to make sure that this kind of stuff doesn't happen again, and those things are, not personnel issues, those things are city issues that we will address. Details and further things will be forthcoming, I'm committed to that. I think the people have a right to know, you pay our salaries, and you play, pay the salaries of the police officers in the city of Sunbury. So this is not a whitewash. We will tell you as much as we can, when we can, and I'm committed to it.
So John, are you continuing to follow this even after your off-counsel?
Well, I'm going to do my best to follow through with the things that are already in progress. There are issues in progress that have not been resolved, and I'm going to continue to follow those until they are resolved.
Thank you, you've told me much more than I heard moments ago. Yes. Thank you.
Another question? Yes, sir?
Yeah, Mayor President Gordon Lamb. Chief Hair cited problems with interference from the counsel affecting police morale. Which council members was he referring to?
I don't know, sir, he referred to it, I might want to ask him at some point in time.
Well, I think you should surely know these sort of things, it was in the paper this morning.
What was in the paper? Who did work?
About interference with the police department causing morale issues.
Well, I didn't say there wasn't. Who am I supposed to identify?
Well--
I think his statement was there's some council members.
Are somebody who's supposed to be in charge of the police, you should know these things.
Why would I know who he thinks have a morale?
Well, I'm sure it's been discussed with you. I mean, I think it's--
If he wants to get it protected--
I mean, former Chief Hair, ask him, he's right here.
I'm corporal now, but do you pay my money? Pay my money.
Can you dismiss that corporal hair?
You're allowed to talk, whatever you want to say.
Okay, well, one of the instances was council member John Shitman, thought he was being followed and harassed by one of the officers, when the officer was just going to a disturbance, a suspicious person call, he demanded a independent investigation on that, which we proved was totally false, so that's one of the reasons. Just the day-to-day operations, I knew there was things when I became chief, that a lot of policies and procedures have not been touched for over ten years, and I was trying to work on them to get them up to par, and just accusations that I was trying to cover things up, which I did not. So that's part of the reasons why it's time to step away until a better time when they get their investigation done, and they can--
Okay, I'd like to ask you a question. Was I the only officer, was I the only councilman that was shadowed that night?
There was nobody shadowed that night.
Thank you, I was going to ask the same question.
No.
That's not true.
For the record--
No, the elderly was followed home, but that was--
For the record, I got a, I got a police escort home, they ran my tags, and I haven't been stopped since nineteen eighty-three for anything. And I didn't get arrested, but I will tell you what I said about the guy, if I did something wrong, I am no better than anybody else, and I deserve to get a ticket if I did something wrong.
And it was the same officer that was responding to a call.
Yeah, up on the hill, but I lived up when you were sent.
Well, he was hungry this way, Mr. Henry. If you're going to chastise police officers for patrolling and doing their job, then you guys really are not up to par in what police, uh, law enforcement is all about.
When you came to me, Brad, you said it was over. It was over.
It was over, it was done.
Right. And as far as I know, Mr. Shitman didn't request any investigation.
Yes, he sent an email out requesting an independent investigation.
Okay. Is, was there any intimidation intentions, maybe? That seems to be the kind of flair that goes around with this counsel. I can, I can speak to that because they tried to intimidate me with my property, after they do not enforce their own combs, but they prefer to destroy taxpayers' property by having it flooded and so forth. And was there any intimidation involved there?
I understand, are you addressing the police department?
I'm addressing the council.
If there's any intimidation for the police department?
That seems to be the--
Well, I'm saying the police department is not intimidating anybody, so if that's your question, that's my answer. Wrap yourself in the police department. Any other questions? Yes?
Jan Gocke, how many police will we have? Do we have now?
Eleven.
Eleven?
Eleven.
Where, if we couldn't hire another policeman before, where will we get the money to hire an outside chief?
We've had one before, but this has worked out well.
Right now, we don't have the money to hire an outside chief. Right now, we don't.
Okay, but at some point, that's what you will do, is what I'm asking.
Yeah. Anything else?
What do they do in the meantime?
What they're doing in the meantime for--
Yeah, who's going to take over for chief in the meantime?
Right now, we have--
You got another one, who's in charge?
Right now, we have supervisors, we have sergeants and corporals that have specific responsibilities, and for short-term, short-term, they will run their shifts as they do right now.
And there will be any one person in charge?
There'll be nobody down there signing anything as a chief. There'll be, if there has to be a decision made, then I have to make that decision until we get somebody.
Is that a good thing?
Is that a good thing? It might be a good thing for the first week, it's not going to be a good thing for three months, no, and then we'll just have to look at that again. That's what we're saying right now.
I will guarantee everybody, the police department, we will be fine, these guys are professional enough and girls are professional enough that will make sure everything is runs smoothly and things won't change, everything's still in order, we still have our stuff we have to do, so I guarantee the officers that we have, everything will be fine.
Anything else? Yes, ma'am?
Also, please, topic, Amy Buener, I missed my opportunity, might I ask if there's any discussion to be had regarding the amendments to the fast-track rental permits or if you received a letter that I emailed to Cheryl this afternoon regarding that discussion?
It was not on the agenda tonight, we thought we were going to take care of that in January after the new council.
Okay, great, thank you.
I did send it to Amy.
Okay, thank you.
You should get the email, but thank you for bringing that up to attention because that's, we ask, you know, for, have support on that when we vote on it, so. Anything else?
Justice Johnson, daily item.
Yes, sir.
Two questions, will the corporals and sergeants in charge have any kind of financial stipends as they lead the?
They'll be doing the same responsibilities they currently do right now.
No compensation for that then?
Right, no.
And then how will Chief Hair's designation affect the budget?
Not at all, right now, because he'd actually be getting a little less money, so that money he was already budgeted for that, yep, so there's no way to pack from there. Okay?
Thanks.
Anything else? Want to thank everybody for coming, this meeting's adjourned.